Adequate growth percentiles and the SPGs work together to create the definition of what the state uses for their growth index. And you've looked at that data overall for the scorecards. But this is the data on literacy alone for our growth percentages, or growth indexes, in Waterford. Now, our work, as you know, has been focused on the elementary. Now that they're up and running, we're maintaining with them and moving down to the secondary, and we've been working with them this year. But you can see, they're all above the average range for growth. So it's pretty impressive to see what our staff is doing in the buildings. And we actually had an opportunity, and Carly might talk about this a little more, to take our secondary principals out to elementary buildings to watch teachers teach. And then one comment they continuously made was, "I'm seeing the same structure in every classroom. They're doing it the same way. They're implementing, you know, they're putting their touches on it, but basically, there's the same format going on." And we can see that gradual release actually occurring with our teachers. And they've just taken it and run with it. It's very impressive. This you've seen before. This was a part of the parent dashboard. It's just an overview to share again. We shared at Oakland schools about what our parent dashboard was showing us back then. At the time, I inserted the M-Step scorecard that was embargoed at the time, so we couldn't share that in our group. And now Carly's going to talk more about how we actually made this happen over the last few years.
How do you talk about three years of work? In just a few moments. I will do my very best, and I'm just here representing an amazing group of people who helped all of this come to be. But we're really proud of the work that we started three years ago. Initially, when we began the work, it was very global, and it occurred during professional development days. It was with a facilitator in front of teachers. We spent that time sharing expectations, common expectations, lesson structure. We talked about assessment procedures, as well as resources that we wanted to utilize. But we realized that wasn't enough, because teachers were saying, "We still are wondering how to do this, and we want to do it better." So then we took it to specific grade levels. And we actually went into classrooms and studied it in action with our own teachers and our own students, which was so much fun. But our teachers were saying, "We still would like some more support." So then, we studied with grade-level teams in their own buildings with their own students for a full year. And we kept going back and revisiting in a series of work with the teachers, who would pull their own students at the time, and we would coach and support our teachers as they took on this new learning. So it really is a multi-tiered approach as to how we processed for the change. So again, I spoke to the first layer, and this was really very significant for us. This was when we sat and said, "As a district, these are going to be our expectations. This is what we want guided reading to look like in our district. This is the frequency in which we want to ensure that our students are seen and provided support. And here are the structures that we're going to utilize in order to do that." We then did a lot of training on running records, which is, again, as Lisa stated, how we ensure, it's one of the most common assessments and most frequent assessments used during reading instruction. We wanted to ensure there was common language and common understanding across the district. So we actually utilized some online modules and presented that to teachers. And then we also had some common templates that we asked teachers to utilize, and we also had some look-forers for them to ensure that they were on the right track. So this was really the beginning. This was planting the seed when we began our training. We did it separately, K-2, 3, 5, because teaching reading in K-2 looks a lot different than teaching reading in grades 3, 5. So after that work, it was a great awareness. It was a great opportunity to gather everybody to understand the vision. But our teachers were saying, "We want to learn more. Help us understand more." And so we thought, "How better to do this than to channel our Jeppe work through Oakland Schools? We partner with them in many ways." But one of the mechanisms that they use for professional development is called the teacher lab. And that's when we take a small group of teachers in to watch our own teachers teaching our own students. And it's great. We work together. We do a great, in the beginning, we set the scene. We have some new learning that occurs as a group. We then see the new learning in action by one of our teachers. You'll see Jeff. That's Jeff Richards right there, third-grade teacher at Houghton, in action. And after that, we debrief as a group what we noticed, what we saw. We provide feedback to the teacher, and we give teachers, we then gave teachers time to plan together. What was really cool about this experience is we brought in all stakeholders. This was all teachers of that grade level, the reading interventionists from that building, building principals from that building, the special education resource teachers from those buildings, too. So it was super cool. We started with grades 1, 2, 4, and 5. That was strategic, and I'll tell you that in a minute. I'll tell you why. But that was our first step of implementation. And Darren, if you want to go to the next slide. In addition to that, we gave ongoing professional development opportunities that occurred during staff meetings. So it was menu choices where teachers got to go visit each other during their planning times, or maybe they would video themselves and study a video of them implementing this new learning, and then critique it and provide each other feedback. So again, I mentioned we started 1, 2, 4, and 5, and that was strategic based on the new reading legislation. When we began this work, we knew that third grade was going to be really, really important because of the reading legislation. And we also knew that our kindergarten class for the 16, 17 school year were going to be the first class that would be impacted by the new legislation. So we provided those teachers the lab experience. We started with third-grade teachers in the fall, and then we labbed our kindergarten teachers in January, because as part of the kindergarten curriculum, that's when it's most appropriate to start the reading, true reading, guided reading process for kindergarteners. But we still needed another level. We learned after speaking with teachers and working with teachers that they needed one more level. And so this is where it got really deep. We learned through the lab experience that the person that was our host teacher who put themselves out there and took the risk really grew tremendously from the experience. So we wanted to replicate that as much as we could. So we visited every third-grade team across the district three times throughout the year. We studied specific parts of guided reading instruction, and then we pulled in their own students and actually practiced in front of their own students with their colleagues. We had feedback, coaching. It was just really exciting. It was wonderful, wonderful work. These are specific information to the topics that we put together. And then we then, this fall, replicated that with our first-grade teachers, because the kindergarten group from last year had moved up to first grade. So we replicated this work for our first-grade teachers. I feel like I talked really fast, and I can talk to you about this for hours, because we are so proud of this work. But this year, we continued that K-5 vision for any new teachers that came to the district. So we provided that global awareness, running records, training, expectations for guided reading instruction in our classrooms. We provided choice sessions for teachers to attend if they would like to learn more and gain a deeper understanding to continue to build their confidence in implementing guided reading. And then we also created principal labs, where principals got to study reading in other principals' buildings, because we're continuing to build that network and system as a district. We continued the grade-level professional learning through building literacy teams, which are BLTs with interventionists. And then, again, we got to the core of the work. What we're the most proud of this year is our grade-level building team work with what we call our peer-to-peer experience. We had that with first-grade teachers, and our third-grade teachers from last year said, "Don't let us go. We want to do some more." So we continued that with them again this year, but we took a different spin on it and looked at a different part of the literacy block in addition to guided reading. So our next steps in our process, we have surveys out to teachers. We talk with teachers. We're visiting classrooms constantly to gather some formative assessment data. We will get some perception data from our teachers. And lastly, we will look at NWEA growth and state assessment data when that's released. But the most important thing I want to recognize here is that I'm just here as a voice. We have the most amazing teachers that took this work on in the district, and it's really a credit to them for their work. But I would have to say, if it wasn't for the Dream Team in the CIA department, this would not be possible. We all wear different hats. We all specialize in different things, different areas within our department, but we all come together for a common cause, and there was not one person in the curriculum instruction and assessment department that did not contribute to this work. And they are here this evening, because we want to recognize them and thank them. So if I could please introduce them. Come on.
And we're all wearing our shirts, you know, and it's...
So Shannon Path is our elementary ELA consultant. She's also our Title I consultant for the district. Monumental in this work, so thankful. Joe Austin is our science consultant for the district and an instructional coach for the district. I see who's over there. Chris Saporin is a reading interventionist at Houghton Elementary School part-time, but she's also an instructional coach for the district part-time. Megan Cortland is our secondary ELA consultant part-time, and she also teaches at the amazing Durant High School the other part of her day. Sam Hague is our elementary and secondary math consultant, and she just could not stay away, because it's all about good instruction. So we are so thankful to have her. Lauren Wiseman is an instructional coach for the district, and she, as you may know her, is an amazing teacher in our classrooms in Lower L, and we were so thankful to have her input as a coach here in the district. Elizabeth Cucci, who is our assessment coordinator, who helped put all of this work into place, especially with all the IRIPs and all the reading legislation, tremendous, and looking at all the data and helping us with the data. And Kelly Suhanik, who is an instructional coach here in the district as well, she also teaches part-time at Donaldson Elementary School as a fourth-grade teacher. So I cannot say enough about this team. We do, we call them the Dream Team. They are just an amazing group of people, and because of them, our teachers were able to make these transitions, and our students have just been able to excel. So I just want to make sure that they are recognized for the amazing people that they are and the work that they do every day.
So questions from the board? And our staff sitting down?
You can ask questions.
I don't have questions so much as, there's a saying that I use often in my role and my other job, and that is, "In God we trust, all others bring data." And when I look at this, this data, this work, this body of work, this path that you've been on resulted in this, resulted in extraordinary results. This is not magic. This is hard work, determination. It's a precision focus on these targeted strategies, on these clearly defined expectations. It had to be collaborative. It had to be deliberate. It had to be intentional. It had to be sustained. And it had to take all of you and all of the teachers and the learning interventionists and the principals and special education teachers and the administration to put that all together, all for the benefit of our kids. And it is a huge success story. It is a best practices, if I've ever seen one. And the best part for me is that you're not resting on your laurels. You're taking it, you're improving every single day in how to take it to the next level. Continuous improvement in a way that can only benefit every student that we have the opportunity in Waterford and to touch their lives. So I just commend all of you for the extraordinary body of work, for this journey that you've been on, and for the journey that you continue on, and to thank you for what you do for our youngest learners now and for carrying it into our older students as well. It's, I know I'm gushing again, but it's, I mean, I have tears in my eyes. It's so genuine. I just couldn't, I couldn't be more proud of what you guys have done and more grateful to all of you and to all of the people that were involved in this. It's just extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you guys go, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Can you guys go back some slides? Can you go back? Are you allowed to? Or can you? I guess you're allowed to, but...
Darren can't go back slides.
To this one, how things have changed NWEA growth percentiles. There. So, and I think I know, but just like third grade, fourth grade, in spring of 2014, a 1. And two years later, 89, 86. Am I really seeing what I think I'm seeing? That's kind of awesome. Wow. You know, we...
It's hard to be quiet.
Yeah.
We're actually quiet. No, I just so... And it's not just NWE that's telling us this, right? I guess that's a really big point. You know, we have reward schools in our district because of this work. We have 100% growth indexes in our district because of this work. Our proficiency rates in many of our elementaries are in the 90s and above because of this work. So it's one thing to say, yes, we have NWEA. We have NWEA, and this, and this, and this. Yes, you are seeing this. Yes, this is real. We have the most amazing teachers, and we have the most amazing CIA staff that anybody could find.
So like, from a 1 to an 89 in two years?
Yes.
We stood for the bowling team and clapped? Come on, man. This is, I'm going to give you that. That's kind of crazy.
Okay, leave that slide up there.
Are you allowed to?
So I don't know if there's an easy answer for this, but, okay, I'm very fortunate that my employer allows myself and several of my staff members to come every Wednesday and read to kids. So I can have those kids read to me, and I can walk out and say, "That kid's a strong reader. That kid's..." But this, NWEA is a computer test. So what's the impact of testing kids that, we want to know how well they read and comprehend on a computer with a mouse that they only have at school and they don't have at home?
Great. Well, the state requires us to have benchmark assessments now, and NWEA is one of them that's allowable. At the kindergarten, first, and second grade level, the test is very different than it is at the third grade up, and some second graders take the higher-level test. It's more about pre-reading skills, concepts about print, and there's reading in their letter ID and recognition, that kind of thing at a very, very low level. And it is a learning process for the kindergarteners. So we know that going in, and that's why even at that, for them to have grown that much in their scores is pretty impressive. And when you're reading with a student, they're going to be reading to you at their independent level. They're not going to be reading to you at their instructional level, and that was the key for us, was to get direct instruction going at their instructional level every day. And for the low kids, as many times a week as possible, because they need repetition and they need more.
John Paul?
I've always been a fan of Waterford Reads and the whole reading initiative. You know, I think it really does, the work that you do changes the trajectory of somebody's life. You know, when you talk about education, early on education, as you just mentioned, really meeting the child where they're at and working with them with where they're at to get them up to the level that possibly they need to be at, and then even exceed that. So this really isn't just, you know, scores that show us or numbers that show us, data that show us what our students' reading levels are. It really shows where their education can go. And there is that opportunity that these children could go anywhere, you know? And many of them may look back later on down the line and say, "It was because somebody came and read to me at my school, because my school district really promoted the reading initiative and told my parents that it was important to read to me every night." So I'm a huge fan of this. I think this is great. This is good data, and it really, the work that you're doing, it's not just about reading. It's not just about scores, as you know. It's about really changing the lives of our young students.
And Joan, just so you don't feel bad, we were at a principal's lab, and one of the third-grade teachers at Donaldson was doing this amazing lesson, and her goal was to have students support their opinions about the book. And with very little prompting, those kids were off, having conversations, saying, "I don't know if I agree with you on that, because on this page it says..." And I walked away because I had tears in my eyes and didn't want to cry in front of the kids, because it was so amazing to see.
But I want to end with two comments. One, I appreciate your sharing with Oakland Schools. All those districts have a lot more in mind than us. They're going to take what Waterford does and do it twice, three times, as many times they do it. But that's the way it is, and it's good for all kids. And I really think the point where your staff goes in and teachers allow their classes to be laboratories is really, for me as an employee, for anyone who's an employee who thinks they're confident in what they're doing and have their peers, I give credit to, one, the teacher who does it. I give second credit to that team that goes in, because what I hear is, it is powerful. It's a respectful thing. The person who is nervous about it gets more out of it than they anticipated, so I think that's great. So we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, Bill. Next, we're going to talk about snowplows.
Follow that.
Snowplows.
Snowplows.
Because is it going to snow all summer?
We're going to fix anything the agenda. That's what you've got to do. Put me in a different order.
Probably you won't get a standing ovation.
No, not at all. Hey, we're out to bid for four snowplow or ground trucks. The purpose of this is that we need to replace our vehicles. Two of them are 28 years old, and they're actually out of service now. We will not put another nickel into them. They're not repairable. The other ones are 19 years old. We're going to use the MyDeal, which is the state's, the state of Michigan's purchasing program, where we have statewide discounts and utilize those. Keep in mind that the funding source on this is general fund. We can't use capital project dollars for vehicles except for buses. And to stay within my budgetary constraints, we'll buy two vehicles before the year is out, and then two vehicles as the year starts in '19.
Go ahead, Bob. Is there, and I, it's great, we're dealing, we're participating in the MyDeal, so we're getting the best deal. I assume no dealerships in Waterford local participate in that. I mean, I'd rather go through a Waterford business than going down to Westland, but if they don't participate, then we have to go where...
The dealership in Westland, yeah. Dealership in Westland was the one that won the bid through the state for the greatest discounts.
So they do it all for everybody.
Yes.
Margin's pretty low on those, so the volume has to be between one or two dealerships.
Right.
When you mean general fund '19, you mean the one that'll be July for us?
Correct.
So we'll have to wait till January to think about two trucks. Any other questions for Bill?
Yeah. Why is this brought to the board for approval? Like, why would this purchase be brought to us for approval?
It's state law. What happens is the board can make policies and determine with the seven members here of what the policies of the district are going to be, but regardless of what those policies are, the state overrides those policies and insists that I take it to the board for these particular purchases. And it's anything over $23,000, almost $24,000 is what state law is.
Perfect. So it's in our bylaws and policies, too, as well? Yeah, I know it is.
It is, it is, but the policies refer to state law.
Right, right. But it's, we're following our policies with this. It's perfect.
Any other questions? Joan?
Just a quick question. These are, when it says grounds trucks, that means something we can start using now, assuming, assuming...
Correct. Yes, correct.
No.
Yes, these will be equipped to pulling trailers and working through the lawns and so forth also, as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks.
Next, we move to computer equipment lease RFP. Mr. Holly?
Yes, our current, we have two leases of the district to have a computer replacement cycle, and one of our leases expired this year, so we're going out to bid to replace those. If you remember, years back, we expanded our elementary computer labs, but this will basically cover all of our computer labs district-wide, in addition to our CAD labs as well.
Any questions for Mr. Holly? Joan?
A couple of questions, Mr. Holly. How long was the lease that is expiring?
It was a four-year lease, but we're looking at a five-year, because what we've noticed is that in the past, once you get, once you got beyond four years, we found that our equipment was very limited. But because technology, the way it is, a lot of the things are out on the web, we feel that a five-year plan will be able to accommodate that.
Technology won't change so much in that fifth year.
It still changes, but with how we use it, that equipment, we're finding, is lasting longer.
And this is just hardware?
Yes.
And how many computers will this particular lease bid cover?
It's 1,350 regular lab computers, and we have 107 CAD station computers.
And how many buildings does that cover for us?
Every building.
So every building will get upgraded?
Every building will be touched.
So is this the only lease, then? We wouldn't expect to see another lease come in five, for five years?
Not, well, we have a couple phases. So these are our lab computers, so we have other computers in the district in the classroom. And we have our, remember, we had our thin client labs that we've been installed, so they're really in three phases. But the thin clients, we purchased those. These are things that are kind of like those big rocks that we've got to put in and make sure we budget for. If we purchased, in the past, we had used bond funds to purchase technology, and then when bond funds kind of ran out, we're limited at how much we can spend with those, we found that we were having 13- and 14-year-old computers, which is very difficult to work.
So that was my last question. It might be a Mr. Holbrook question versus a Mr. Holly question, but I noticed the funding for this is general fund. We cannot do a lease through bond dollars?
That is correct. Yeah, and the reason we do, we've done leases over the last, we started this actually six years ago was our first lease, and that's so we can spread those payments throughout the year. The interest rate that we've been getting on them has been very reasonable, and so we don't have, it allows us to budget for them in my general fund right now.
And that interest rate, is it locked in for the full five years of the lease?
It is.
As well as the lease rate?
Correct.
So there's not a re-opener or anything on that?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Darren, with, and I think I know the answer probably has to do with purchasing compared to buying, but with the trucks, we're just going through MyDeal and just not doing a bid, but yet on this, we're doing a bid package. There's no MyDeal program for leasing computers?
They have, REMC has some bids out there with some of the specs, but some of the specifications are different. They're not something that we would, we would choose to last for four, or for five years. And really, with our pricing through Dell that we've been getting in the past has been lower than what we've ever been able to see on REMC, because REMC, when they go out to bid for that, and that's a statewide bid as well, they allow you to purchase one unit at a time at that price. So when you buy a volume like we're doing and spreading those payments over five years, we get a considerable discount, lower than the bids that are out there in REMC.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Thank you.
Next item is Waterford Board of Education Ethics. I place this on the agenda because ethics, governance, standards, we currently have that. I think we need to look at a Waterford Board of Education Code of Ethics. I think it needs to be specific enough to hold each of us accountable, bring some civility and respect back into the boardroom. We know that research has proven that school district leadership has a proven correlation between the work of their school boards and student achievement. We know that school boards in high-achieving districts exhibit characteristics and practices that differ greatly from those in lower-achieving districts. I know that this board is committed to governing the district in a manner that creates high achievement and positive outcomes for students. We currently have our version of a code of ethics, but it has not been adopted by all seven current board members. And out of respect for all seven current board members, I feel it needs to be revisited, discussed, reviewed, updated, and approved by all seven of us. I have a draft. It's only a talking document. They're not my words. In fact, most of these words were, can I use the word plagiarized? No. They were borrowed from all the districts that Mrs. Bar can mention earlier. So I think I have enough copies for all of us. I will be placing this topic on our April 26 study session, because I am, obviously, I'm just bringing this to everybody now, and I think people need to absorb it and discuss it. So I think there should be plenty of time, tonight included. So are there any comments about reviewing our code of ethics or standards?
Well, we have, we have board member ethics already in our policy. So what is, what have you seen that's different on here?
My biggest concern is that they were adopted, I think, primarily before you were on the board, and I think the chance to give you and the rest of the board input is, is that what we should follow now? Logical. If it's not, and we keep exactly what we have, then that's the way we move. I just think it's time that, as a board, we sit down and look at the way we govern ourselves.
Can I just add something here? I mean, I don't have a, we're getting this information right now, so just looking through some of these things. But with regard to ethics, you know, I would want to make sure that we're actually following the current board ethics that we have in place. There's been a number of instances, it's no secret on this board, where board members have shown disrespect towards other board members. And I would say that you... and witnessed where board members have been disrespectful towards other board members and have not fully been handling themselves in a professional manner.
So I would say. And trying to make sure this doesn't become a lot of finger pointing. If you, and I realize you've just received this, and if you've read any of these from other districts, you recognize it, but the first one is, "I will behave in a manner, I," we each sign it, "I will behave in a manner that is dignified and worthy of trust, promoting the best interests of the Waterford School District as a whole, seeking to win the community's confidence that it's all being done in the best interest of students." I'm not saying that's the best word, but I'm saying that I think I need to take ownership. We all need to take ownership, and then we hold ourselves accountable as a board. I'm not trying to point any fingers about past situations, current situation. I'm saying, let's pause. Let's get some governance. Take mine, throw it away, start over. I'm totally fine with that. I'm just think it's a starting point to discuss it. I appreciate your comment.
Yeah, no, you know what? That's, you're exactly right, and there's nothing wrong with this at all. I mean, the stuff in here, I just, again, I'm reading, I'm just getting it. You know, it's all good stuff, and it's what we should be doing, but that's, I guess my thing is, that's what we should have been doing all along. And I think each and every one of us, when in June or July comes and we take our petitions to Oakland County to decide to run, to sit on this Board of Education, we should have already all thought about this right here. This should have been happening a long time ago, and if we don't want to abide by this, which I agree with you, we all should, then we shouldn't be on this board because this, we should have been following this, these type of things all along. You do that as a board member, and if you don't want to, then you shouldn't be here.